We'll start the meeting. Sorry we're here late, but that's okay.
My fault.
Okay, 6:04. Not bad, not bad. Happy birthday, Matt.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have a special presentation. I don't know if you wanted to kick it off, or Larry, you wanted to kick it off? Councilmember Herman, do you want to kick it off?
Sure, I'd love to. So tonight, we have our annual study session with the Youth Commission, many of whom are represented here. And they're going to tell us a bit about what they have been doing, what they are going to be doing, and some goals and thoughts that they have. And they've been very busy, as always, with some of our traditional activities and events that we have, as well as new ones that we're doing this year. So we've assigned amongst themselves people to lead different parts of the study session. So they'll each tell us a little bit, and they're going to start out by introducing themselves. How long have they been on the Commission? What school do they go to? What year they are? Yep, and then we're going to go down there to get this kicked off. All right. So you ready?
Yeah.
We don't have to leave.
Would you like to test it?
Would you like to?
Why are you sitting there?
She doesn't want to test it.
I thought Matt and Donna would sit the farthest because they're probably the most tired of us.
I'm going to sit right next to you, Anthony.
Good deal. Well, I'm Anthony Amato. This is my third year on the Commission. This year, I'm happy to serve as the Commission's president. And I'm a sophomore at Vista Grande.
I'm Alexis O'Neil. This is my second year on the Commission. This year, I am the Commission's secretary. And I am a junior at Casa Grande Union High School.
Hello, I'm Gracie Annala. This is my fourth year on the Commission. And I'm the vice president, and I'm a junior at Union.
Hi, my name is Elle Wiles. This is my second year on the Commission. I'm the Public Relations Officer. And I'm a sophomore at Casa Grande Union High School.
Hi, my name's Iris Moreno, and this is my third year in Youth Commission. I'm a member, and I go to Vista Grande High School. I'm a sophomore.
Hello, my name is Leilani Hyland. This is my first year on the Youth Commission. I'm a normal member, and I'm a junior at A U S U Prep Academy.
I'm Kiara Dela Cruz, and this is my first year on the Youth Commission. I'm a member, and I'm a sophomore at Vista Grande High School.
My name's Alex Ortega. This is my first year on the Commission too. I'm also a member. And I'm a sophomore at Union.
Do you want us to introduce ourselves?
Sure.
You know it. You guys probably know the ones.
Okay, I'm Lisa Fitzgibbons, and I'm a graduate of Casa Grande Union High School. I'm not going to tell you the year. But I wasn't on the Youth Commission, but of course, I was really active. I was class president all four years, and in key club, and in pom-pom. They were pom-pom, not cheerleading. You know, we have a different group. But so glad to see you guys here. Go Cougars.
I'm Bob Huddleston, and I was a senior at Casa Grande Union in 1976. And I was not active in anything. I regret that, and I very much admire you guys for stepping up and getting involved.
I'm Jeff Lavender. I graduated from a Clintock High School, so. And I was involved in various things in school.
Hi, I'm Anthony Edwards. I'm a graduate of Casa Grande Union High School. Football player, wrestler, as well as track with the high school. Was in DECA, Miss Ju, for many years. I watched jobs get started with Miss Ju. And so I'm just thankful for the opportunity to be here with you all.
Hi, I'm Matt Herman. I think you guys know. I'm also a graduate of Casa Grande Union High School. I played football. I was in track, but not the running part, the throwing part, obviously. And I was student body president and class president of, so someday you may end up, you know, doing something crazy.
Hi, Donna McBride, and I'm a senior, but not with you guys. And I did not go to Union or Vista, but my husband graduated with Bob in 76.
And my name is Craig McFarlane. I'm the mayor of the city of Casa Grande, and I've been here 18 years. Been extremely involved with the community over the time that I've been here. And I'm an outsider. So I came from California, actually lived in a move 10 times, and lived in six different states until I settled here in Casa Grande, and I love it here.
And you know, we've seen with the council that I think it was four out of six that went to Union back when it was our only option. Now, you know. And so, but you know, we think that's something important where we live in a town where, you know, we do have to eventually leave to pursue higher education. The Youth Commission is an important factor in our city for developing reliable leadership to be able to come back and serve our community the way you guys have. And so that's something that we strive to do, is to instill that sense of community for the town within our Youth Commissioners. And so with that, I think I'll start Lexi off, talking about our annual Days of Shredding.
So this past October, October 23rd, we had our Fall Day of Shredding. It is a semi-annual event. At this event, we were able to raise $963 towards our Commission. We've had multiple first-years and second-years be able to run this event. This event entails people from the community are able to come in for free, and they're able to get rid of any documents or any items of paper or recyclable goods that they may have, and they're able to get it shredded professionally and securely.
It's not really free, because if you don't give a donation...
That's true.
You get the stick eye from you guys.
That's very true. Donations are very...
It's usually Lexi handling the cash.
Yeah. It's usually me. And it is sponsored by First American Bank. Credit Union. Yeah. We have our upcoming Spring Day of Shredding. We have two first-years on this year as well. We are still working on a date, but we are very excited, and we are very ready to gain some more money for the Casa Grande Youth Commission.
So this year, we'll be having our annual Garden of Sunshine Ceremony. And what that is, is it's a ceremony for the children who have passed away in Casa Grande. And so we just do this every year to just remember them and honor them and such like that. And so applications are still open for them to be up on the, on our wall thing. And it's in the Youth Commission website, and you can email them to Solangelava. And during this ceremony, it's just listing off the names and handing the stuff to the families. So it's just, it's a very great event, and I'm very glad to be running it. It's February 11th. I forgot to mention that. It's February 11th this year, so next month. At 6:00 PM, and it's right where the pool is at Karmic Nat. So I'm very grateful to be running that event.
And we'll also be doing our Annual Heart of Casa Grande Scholarship. It's a $500 scholarship that juniors and seniors who live or live in Casa Grande or go to school in Casa Grande can apply for. They submit by art video, art video or essay, and on what they think the heart of Casa Grande is. The scholarship's going to open May 6th, and we're excited to launch with our newly Instagram, our new Instagram page to promote the scholarship.
And if you want to follow our Instagram?
Oh, yeah. It's CG Youth Commission on Instagram. Go follow it, guys. Yeah, go follow it, please. Thank you. Okay, so I know that there's been talk of a transit system coming about in the city for a while now. And it was recently brought to our attention this past Saturday morning, which I know she's not here right now, but I'd like to thank Deb, the manager of the Transit Department. No one really wants to wake up early on a Saturday, right? And she did it. She came here super early to present her, give us her presentation about the transit system, which is amazing. All of us really liked the idea. We think it'd be a huge convenience, especially for, not even just for the youth, for anybody who doesn't have a license or isn't able to get around in the city without like some sort of help. And the cost is very affordable. We think it's a great idea. And when it comes to the youth, of course, there's different levels of maturity amongst different ages. So it was our idea, I think most of us agreed upon, that 10 and under should be accompanied by an adult. And we thought it would be nice, especially for like some of our high schoolers who may be strapped for cash at the moment, for it to be a little cheaper for us to ride the transit system throughout the city. Sorry. The commercial, yes. That's, how could I forget the most exciting part? Oh, my goodness. Yes. Deb, the manager of the Transit Department, wanted us, she gave us the amazing idea to make a commercial advertising the transit system and sort of, I guess that's another thing we could post on our Instagram. And, you know, get the word out, start telling people like, hey, this is a thing now. And she showed us, I'm sure you guys have seen the same presentation where it expands over the years, and like slowly but surely, it starts to reach bigger parts of the city. And I think that's sort of like a beautiful metaphor for how much we've grown over the years. And I think we're all super excited about that.
Did she have you vote on your favorite name for the transit? We did.
Yes.
Yes. I think we reached some consensus. Do you want to share it with us?
Yeah.
I'm curious.
Roadrunner?
We were a little upset to not see Matt's Brit idea.
I'm still campaigning.
So Roadrunner was a close second. Okay, good. Yes. And so I'd just like to talk about real quickly our upcoming Second Annual Arizona Youth Government Summit, which I'm sure you all may remember me talking a lot about last year when we were coming up to our First Annual Arizona Youth Government Summit. We're still extremely excited to be bringing together young changemakers from across Arizona's tribes and municipalities this year. Yes, we are hosting, as you know, we're the council that came up with the idea and developed the event. This year, our theme will be uniting youth leaders. Last year, our theme was empowering youth in government. But this year, we're with a panel theme and more of a focus on solving problems together. We'll be in the overarching idea there this year. And so we're working with a group of about 14, it's looking like councils, from across the Pinal County, from across Pinal County and surrounding areas. And so that's looking like, you know, youth councils that are like us, you know, we have in Coolidge and Florence and so on. But also delegations from municipalities like Eloy or Marana that have recently developed sufficient populations to sustain a youth council, but don't quite have that there yet, since that growth is so recent. And that also looks like working with CDPs like Santan Valley, which certainly do have the population of youth to sustain a youth council, but don't have that municipal organizational support for that yet. And so we find that's essential for developing and fostering that network of youth leaders and youth councils in our state to to ensure reliable future leadership for this growing region of Arizona. And so speaking about that, you know, we're honored to be invited to the table of local government this evening. What we're happy to have is an annual tradition, and we thank you for inviting us to the conversation.
Would you do us a favor and make sure you send to either Larry the dates of these upcoming events?
Yes.
So that he can put it on his planner and communicate back to us.
Yes, so the summit will be May 6th. Sorry if I didn't mention that. The summit will be May 6th.
Send it to Larry, then we'll get it on our calendar.
Awesome. And our Spring Day of Shredding is always right after Tax Day, so it's looking like around the 22nd. And then our Heart of Casa Grande Scholarship will be starting accepting applications May 7th, or March 7th, sorry. And so we have a lot of exciting things coming up this semester.
That's awesome. Do we have any questions of the Youth Commission?
I just have a clarification. Are you guys including Maricopa?
Yes, Maricopa. We're working with a lot of partnerships on them, with them right now, in addition to AIGS.
And what about Heel River?
Heel River, the Akamal-Atham-Pipash Youth Council is one that we work closely with, and we were really excited to have as our largest delegation to AIGS last year. Yes, yeah. We're excited to work with both of those groups again this year. Maricopa sadly wasn't able to make it to the summit last year because we scheduled on prom weekend. So, but we fixed that error this year, so we're hoping to... Yes, yes, we're hoping to steer clear of that with May 6th.
Any questions for these guys?
What's happening next Wednesday?
Oh, Leilani?
Scared me for a minute.
Yes, business hours at the rec center. What's the address? 1905, 1902? I don't remember the address. Yes, the Casa Grande Rec Center. Yes.
We could have been impressed if you had that.
I feel like I know it.
We've had a time of our meeting minutes for so long.
Yes, it's from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock in the evening. So please come. It's an excellent opportunity to network and get to know people and other members in your city, business owners. We are very excited to be hosting it this time with the Chamber of Commerce. Yes.
Any other questions? Do you guys have any questions of us? Captive audience.
So I have a question.
That's a pretty loaded question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I just, are you asking about like our opinion on the education system?
I think...
About the climate of education and the high school. We've got different schools and prep here, so, I mean, but, you know, especially with our high school. How are you guys feeling about that?
It's a loaded question.
It's a loaded question, but it's something that's really important.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, I'm really curious about.
And we're the... Without shooting our own horn, I think we're the most important group to go to on that, right?
Tells how you really feel.
I will start off, because knowing Anthony, he'll tell you everything you need to know. The clock, Anthony.
We might have to go into executive session to tell off.
I think much like anything, there is room for improvement based on the demographics of the high schools and the middle schools alike. I think we are doing very well on aspects, and I think we've been able to grow in aspects throughout the years, especially with our population. I think we should focus on different organizations and clubs, also on our education and our in-depth of our curriculum. I think there is definite, I think it's very interesting to have different members from the council and different members of district office listening to students. And I would also like to think that there will be more opportunities in the future to be able to voice our opinions and to share with district and any higher-up educational officers or members.
Yeah, and I think the Youth Commission, we appreciate the opportunities we get to work closely with the district. But in our community lately, you've seen, it seems like there's a lot of focus on the politics, maybe, and not at surface value that word, but you know, the politics that have always been in education. And I feel like as a student, you know, we, unless we're gossiping with a teacher, you know, barely get the trickle-down effects of that. I think there's a lot of heat in that discussion right now, when as students, you know, we do feel it, but we also feel a lot of the benefits that come out of certain decisions being made that everyone might not see all the sides of. And so I think there's certainly a lot to be said for, I mean, there's one thing that I don't think you can doubt, and that's curriculum. I think curriculum's strong right now. Of course, that has to do a lot with however, the double-edged sort of the focus on test, you know, a huge focus on testing, which can't be blamed at a local level, obviously, to a degree. I think what Lexi said about enrichment and things in the school district, I know the Youth Commission, you know, we're city-sponsored, but enrichment opportunities like these to develop well-rounded students are also important and could always use improvement.
Can you describe what, because I don't know the mechanics of it, what is the Youth Commission's relationship to the school board and to school management?
And we learn when we do come to interact with the school district that we are not whatsoever at all affiliated with the high school, the Union High School District. As you see, we have members outside of that, from outside of that district. We accept... So we are an official board and commission of the city of Casa Grande, just like the Arts and Humanities Commission, the Transit Advisory Council. And so we have no formal relationship with the high school district or the high school board or the superintendent's office.
Is that something that could be pursued in the future for the board to recognize you?
It's a city commission. We've worked with the district. We've worked with the district in the past. We've worked with the district in the past, and they've helped us with some activities, but we have talked about having similar type setup with the, with the school board, how we're doing this, because we got, we have a cross-section of different schools here. It's not just like one student council from one school or one group from one school. So it is something that we've looked into.
And I think we have to remember...
Pass the microphone.
And I think we have to remember that even though there might not be a formal connection, that informally, you are all leaders in your school and in your, you know, your age group, and to your younger siblings and, you know, friends and everything. So I think you have to remember to just use your voice, and people are listening. I think that times have changed, and people want to hear from the young people. And I think, I'm sure you all have pretty good relationships with many of your teachers, and you're probably seeing that, yes, politics, you know, is politics, but the teachers really are there for the best interest of the kids in most cases. So I think that communication with your teachers and, you know, just using your voice and continuing to be that leader, because people are watching you. And they're always going to watch you, and especially the young kids coming up behind you. So even though it might not be a formal connection, informally, you're going to be there as leaders, and people are going to be listening to you.
And I think that's a great point. I think, I don't know if I speak for the whole commission, but certainly administratively, we appreciate that autonomy that we have away from the district. You know, we are typically all individually leaders within that system. And so to be able to create change outside of it and experience other systems like the local, like local government municipal systems teaches important lessons, and we gain valuable experience from.
With the Youth Commission, what's the biggest challenge that you have every year, that you feel?
I have a feeling it might be public speaking, based on the...
Watch me pass the mic.
I actually have one. When I joined, I kind of was in my shell, and it was hard to break out and like try new stuff and make new friends.
Relationships.
Yeah, relationships.
As the first year on the commission, the hardest thing I've faced is like trying to get myself to reach out more and like put myself out there and like be a leader in this community, but I'm glad and lucky to have this opportunity.
Well, the hardest thing for me was like understanding kind of like what everyone was talking about, because like, they would always talk about like the Arizona Youth Government Summit, and it was AIGs. And I didn't understand like what that was like at all, like what that was for.
You mean hacklerms?
Yeah, well, like...
What's the government?
He thought we just gathered, he thought we just had like an egg hunt.
It was like kind of hard, like understanding and getting a grasp of like what we do here, because it's kind of a lot different than like what I thought we would actually do, but like, I really like it.
Yeah, sorry, to sort of piggyback off of what you said, we're both like first years. Everything is very much fast-paced, a lot of it is very unexpected. So, I think just being sort of pushed into that was a bit of a shocker, but I like it. I like the fast-paced, like...
And that's still working at the speed of government.
I know.
So, we're doing our best.
I can agree with Leilani on that, because last year, when it was my first year, first meeting, I had to sit with Anthony at the retreat. And it was really nerve-wracking to talk to Anthony for the first time ever, and then I was also...
35-year-old and a 16-year-old Rodney. A 17er.
That's young.
And also, I became the Public Relations Officer my first meeting ever, which was kind of terrifying to talk to all these new people, talk to Anthony, and just be part of it, yeah.
I think my hardest part, when it was my first year and still to this day, is the technicality of everything and everything in government that we learn and we witness. I remember my first retreat that we had, we were stuck in a room for a good chunk of the day. Well, not stuck, they gave... They gave us snacks, so we were okay. We had pretzels. But they were telling me about the quorum rule and how you can't have more than a certain number of people, and I was like, wow, and then the reply all email button, oh my goodness. That's a big no-no. Oh, yeah.
I think the closest thing we have to a hazing ritual is probably Brett's legal presentation that we have to give and make everyone sit through at our retreat. But I've been waiting for someone to say this, and I'm shocked no one has. My biggest challenge by far has been getting my stuff together. And for that second Saturday of every month, having everything in order and have, being able to be put on the spot, and you know, and sending all the emails out. And maybe that's just as president, but I, that's coordination and planning. Yes, as secretary, that's, it's a big part of this.
Let me say a little bit there, because like you said, all of these, all of these youth go to different schools, and only about half of them are here tonight, because some had cheer, some had dance, some had party, you know, all kinds of homework stuff going on.
I'd like to clarify, no one, no one was at a party this evening.
We also have a member that's in the elementary school district at a middle school, so we do go down to 8th grade. But like they said, it's getting their stuff together, because this isn't a school club. They don't get to meet after school, they don't all go to the same school, they don't have a period at school where they can go and meet like key club or student council. Like, so they do this on their own time, Saturdays, evenings, weekends, nights, all the time. So, they're really to be commended for doing that. And also, I need to say that Kendra Bray, who was a commissioner, and then she was a volunteer leader, her and her friend Crystal, who were both on the commission together, and now Kendra actually works part-time for the city and helps with the commission, so that's how we get most of our stuff done, along with Jeff. And now, Sol, where'd she go? There she is, she's our new staff liaison, and she's doing a great job helping us. If we could just get the finance department to get our reports done, that'd be great. We're working on that. But, and this year, no, last year, Holly Ricosi, who's also the downtown coordinator, she was on the commission as well when I was a leader. So, it's been a while, but she is a volunteer leader now, so she's been helping us a lot, and she's getting ready for her street fair this weekend, so she couldn't make it tonight. But like I said, these, they do it all on their own time, and they're truly leaders in the community, so we're very proud to have them here.
And we do appreciate you guys, so really appreciate everything you do, appreciate your feedback and being leaders in our community, it's very important. And I think we should give them a round of applause.
They may have another question first.
So, you can ask any more questions, but you guys can.
So, with our Heart of Casa Grande Scholarship, we were wondering what your guys' heart, what you think the heart of Casa Grande is.
So, you can speak still?
Well, when I think of that, I think of...
We talk location, yeah, so like when the scholarship is drawing a picture or writing an essay about it.
Well, this is the heart right here.
Yes.
City Hall, I think, is the heart of Casa Grande. I think that it also, in my mind, it refers to I heart Casa Grande, meaning it's bigger, it's all of Casa Grande, and that I love Casa Grande. So, I think it, I think of it as a bigger metaphor, somebody used the word metaphor tonight, a bigger metaphor to mean the whole community is the heart.
By identifying the heart, what is the result of that? Are you going to have a presentation here, or what?
So, the Heart of Casa Grande Scholarship?
Yeah.
So, it's a scholarship contest where juniors and seniors from, who live in or go to school in the city, write, oh, yeah, sorry, write a picture or draw a picture, write an essay, or film a video about what they believe is their heart of Casa Grande. And so, that is judged, I believe we have some former judges from last year here with us tonight. We'll be, you'll be getting emails about that again soon. But anyway, sorry, so the results are judged by a panel, and so, they then receive that $500 scholarship. And so, it's, we do it to, you know, build that and instill that community pride that we're strong about and having youth identify that part of the city.
I wanted to add on to what the mayor said. This building of the exterior of it, as you're walking up from Florence Boulevard, and the fountain is there, and the building is there, that is the heart of Casa Grande for many of us. We remember walking up to go to school at this building. We spent a lot of our time here in the parking lots, around the building, and Little Sombrero, and of course, now we're sitting on the dais in the cafeteria. So, I think the mayor's spot on, I think this is the heart.
The inner heart, and then you have the metaphor heart.
I hear the senior parking lot is the one to be at.
Well, don't ask Bob about that.
For the cougar jack in the morning, if I...
Yeah, there you go. No, let's move on to that. You know...
Breakfast sandwich, I promise.
It was a food truck.
Right, we have food trucks today. You know, and I think the heart of Casa Grande is everything everybody's talked about, but for me, the heart of Casa Grande really is the people who make it up, and the buildings and the history and all the things that go with Casa Grande are really important. But we wouldn't have that without the people that have lived here for years and have created that history. And so, for me, watching, watching you guys in almost 20 years of the Youth Commission, watching it grow, I think that that's part of the heart, because you're the ones that are going to be here to make things happen. And so, you know, you have, you have...
You have to come back.
Yeah, you have to come back.
You make them sign a contract now. Be secretly part of the...
There is a bonus for you if you do that.
We added in that clause just this year.
For me, the heart goes to conversations we had 20 years ago, and we started planning in the unity march, and we just did our unity march this last Thursday. Somebody gave the description that when you go to Chicago, there's a clear line between the north side of Chicago and the south side of Chicago. And a lot of times, people who live in Chicago never cross that line. You don't go the south side, or you don't go the north side. Here in Casa Grande, we all live together, we work together, we go to church together. We are a true community. And so, that heart is the community, the people that make up this community. And when we really see the heart of this community is when somebody is going through a difficult situation, which we know many of your members are now, and how the whole unity unites behind them in prayer, donations, providing the family, things like that. That's what, that's to me, is the heart of the community, is the relationships.
I was going to say as well, if you ask anyone about what sells Casa Grande, it's the people. If you ask anyone that has moved here from somewhere else, and they say, well, what brought you to Casa Grande? When I got here, it just felt so real and good, I felt good. So, back to what Donna was saying, we make up the heart. It's the people, it's the character, and that speaks value without you saying a word. But it's how we carry ourselves, how we can unite, how we can come together, work together, during difficult situations, whether it's raining, snowing, we unite, and we come together, and we make it happen. That's the heart.
And I'm going to agree, just so you, you know, have my opinion. But no, it really is, I think it is a sense of community, and I think our community is so rich in culture and diversity, and I think that's what helped me, you know, as I grew to a, you know, into my adult years and my children too. So, you know, we have so many successes here, and examples right there, someone that, you know, was a professional football player and still stayed in Casa Grande the whole time, but there's so many people that have been so successful here, so it really is a sense of community, and it's just, there's so many people, their heart is Casa Grande forever, even if they don't live here.
Okay, so I'll go, I should have gone first, because of course I agree, but, you know, when people come here, when businesses come here, you know, and a lot of national-type businesses, they say, man, there's something different about Casa Grande, and I agree, and it's special because of all the people. And like Mr. Lavender said, you know, when I grew up especially, we were all friends. It didn't matter where you lived, where you came from, what color you were, anything. We all grew up together, because we're from Casa Grande, and it was like us versus Phoenix, us versus Tucson, us versus Eloy, you know, stuff like that. But we were all together because we shared that in common, and it's a great place to grow up, and it's a good opportunity. And when I was applying for college and scholarships, and as you guys are, I always use that to my advantage to say, I grew up in a unique community, because everyone's heard of it, and now everyone's really heard of us, right, in the state? They really know who we are, but it's, use it to your advantage, because when we played football, one of my old coaches right here, you know, we'd go to other, we'd go to other towns, and it was our pride, you know? Because we were proud of where we came from, because we were all together, because people would often say, oh, they're just from Casa Grande, but you know what, we showed them. And so, we are Casa Grande, the heart, right here.
And I think... Sorry, I seem to always turn it into one, don't I? And I think that's something that we've seen a lot, you know, in developing Arizona Youth Government Summit, and with some of our members being part of other youth commissions and organizations across the state, is sometimes there's, there still is that, you know, that we're just, we're just from Casa Grande, you know? It's a handicap, and I think we serve to show that we can, it's not something to overcome. We're not overcoming being from Casa Grande, we're from Casa Grande, we're proud of it, and we're using its resources to build us into being better leaders. We're, yes, and use those resources to help us build a better community. We still have that small-town feel that everyone talks about, you know, small-town feel, big-city amenities, when those businesses come. I have plenty of, you know, anecdotes and connections and all that. But we're also a new thriving city, and we have members here who this is their first year living here. And so, this community serves as home and a heart for everyone, and all of our Youth Commissioners can benefit for that for going forward in their leadership careers.
I can't top that, don't pass that.
One more question, anybody have one more question? Then we'll break.
Do we want to share our heart in Casa Grande? Okay, and maybe what that shows about, about what we love about Casa Grande?
Go for it.
But on the spreadsheet that we all have for our Casa Grande, that I totally didn't make. The, I said that my heart of Casa Grande was CG Mountain, because you know, it's been there forever. It's been there longer than we've been here, and it shows that it's just one of those things that despite all the progress we make, we may make as a town, we'll always have, we'll always have things, and we'll always have that, and that'll be one of the things we'll always have as a community.
Mine's a lot more simple. My heart of Casa Grande is Dells. Yeah.
It's local.
It's local, it's a local business, it's a small business. It hasn't been here as long as CG Mountain, but...
Almost.
Almost, it's getting there. But just the feeling it has, the building itself, all of the memorabilia on the walls that it's collected over the years.
I call it our cheers.
I mean, yeah.
We got it, yeah.
Comment about Dells, I remember being a kid and going to Dells Pizza when it was in Arizona City. And I remember when they moved from there to their...
See, it's because they wanted to be the heart of Casa Grande. You can't have the heart of...
Mine, the same as Mayor McFarland, was City Hall, and it was also the high school, and it's where they would light the trees, so, and it's been here for forever, so. I don't know, I've always loved looking at it too, like for my whole life, so I was like, that's what I think the heart of Casa Grande is.
I can agree with both City Hall and the people in Casa Grande, because you go out and you just see, like if you go to a restaurant, most people know each other in the restaurant, so it's nice that we're still, we're a growing community, but almost everyone knows each other, so that's cool. And then, I can agree with City Hall, because it's just, I, I think it's really pretty. There's a lot of history here, because it was also the high school, so.
It's like personal, but I picked my mom's ice cream shop. Yeah, the one downtown, go get ice cream, guys, go get ice cream! The downtown ice cream shop, because I don't know if you guys knew, like this bar, Gugu's Place? That was my Batas place, so, yeah, I picked it.
So, do you have an aunt, Teresa?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I went to high school with her.
That's funny.
My heart of Casa Grande is actually the Neon Sign Park. I think that, well, one, it has like, kind of like, I want to say a bigger city feel. It has like the glitz and the glam, it's all shiny and pretty, especially at night when it gets all dark out, it's lighting up, and I think it also brings in sort of a historical aspect, because those signs are like resurrected, right, they're rebuilt, and... Yeah, they're, I think, like beautiful stamps in history almost. I mean, everything nowadays is so modernized, and I don't want to say bland, but it is just, just a little, a little bit like... Yeah, I know, and I think it's great. I think it's amazing how we can sort of just sit in the Neon Sign Park and look at all the beautiful lights and think, wow, like this is actual history that I'm looking at right now, just in like the businesses that we've seen, how some of them have grown from small to multimillion-dollar corporations, it's insane. And I think that just like watching that timeline happen, unfold right before my eyes is beautiful. I don't know how to follow up on that. My heart of Casa Grande is Vilago Park, because when I was growing up, like the Filipino community in the city, we were all very tight-knit, and we would always have celebrations at Vilago Park, such as birthdays, Easter, or just picnics, just to be around each other. And that like makes up such a big chunk of my childhood and what I remember from it. So, it's just nice to remember and look at.
My heart of Casa Grande was actually the Union Bandroom. I've been a band member since 5th grade, and like when I got to high school, I was overwhelmed with all the passion and acceptance that everyone was like giving. And it's like a place where everyone can be themselves, like you don't have to hide who you are, like into this box, like what high school makes you do. And I just love being there and seeing everyone fulfill their passions.
And I just love being there and seeing everyone fulfill their passions and it's really great.
Well, thank you guys, thank you guys for being here, I really appreciate it. Obviously, the heart of Casa Grande means a lot to all of us, so appreciate you being here, thank you for the presentation and congratulations. So, good job.
I know, I can't just.
I know, so cute, those kids. Oops, sorry, I came up and didn't put my chair away. I, I came up and didn't put the chairs away, I feel so bad. Gloria, were you in, you weren't in Pine Top this weekend? Oh, you were? Lots of snow, so you got out okay then?